Is number of law.
Is there an agenda to be had?
Um, not for the, well, for the first part, it's just ordinances, so there is no agenda for that. It just has a list of the ordinances.
Oh, I didn't, I don't, I don't know. I just saw that there was a.
Yeah, let me.
Plan in order.
Yeah, that doesn't serve as it.
Yeah, we have a.
What's that?
We're just going over ordinances from five to six. It's just a workshop for us and then plan and work begins at six o'clock.
Oh.
So there is a, if you want to take a look, this is the agenda. That's Brian. She probably picked it up.
The kids were in here last night. Those were all the chairs at all.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Hey, Mark. Oh, you know what? We could, I'm gonna have to copy one of these too. Is Brian need an agenda then? No, Brian's got everything. I just didn't make copy of the one he was doing.
So why are we going over ordinances?
Well, there's, we don't have ordinances on some of those.
We have an ordinance on more.
Through here, if there's anything you want to change, get it through here and we'll be ordering it before the other.
Yeah, so Wes, I called that guy and told him he needed to call CMP and get the number.
Yes.
You know, I was confused. I thought Bailey issued that.
No, that's a, that's.
So I called them up. I haven't heard that.
Yeah, well, they'll issue him a number as soon as he creates an account.
Yeah, okay.
We can't do anything until he creates an account.
Yeah.
Cause then we gotta, once you create the account, we give them that work order and then we can get the power.
Get someone to come.
Look at the site.
Want to page this? I'm telling you. I want to page this for about an hour.
Well, no, it's not like we're just kind of reviewing and getting on business. Work can, he's been trying to sign up this EMT class. There's literally every step you have to wait for somebody to review it. It's like 24 to 48 hours. He just bade a P and he goes, I can't schedule it. I have to wait till the.
Of course.
Is everybody late? Nobody's coming in?
He's, he's really, he must have been on the break. I've never said to start it.
I see one participant that's us.
Oh, great. Don't fix it.
So we have to wait. I didn't know if Brian would be coming in. Jake said he's coming and Brian came in yesterday. I think it's a meeting here. Mark, you don't have space those chairs on. They really should be spaced out.
Who's coming? Jason?
Jake.
Oh, Jake.
Was it Walter? Did I not come?
Kate. No, thanks. I never, I.
Right, Kate, the neighbor for this first, the workshop.
Oh, what's her face?
You're good. Let's go over and go over and move couch over and stuff.
It's like a remote cabin and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
I just did two of them with three. Oh, then the like everything. Yeah, just the, just remote cabins.
All right, so we'll go ahead and start the workshop. I do have an adjustment to this. Under moorings, can we go ahead and add households? Okay. The code of ethics and all that, that should be done already, I mean. All right, I want us to do it now.
You do. Your chair, vice chair.
You want to do us from this side? Okay, so in your package, you guys got the code of ethics. You get them every year. You and sign. Oh, I like your shirt.
Oh, thanks.
All right, I was just, so in your package.
Which I gave them in advance.
I know.
I had to include ethics, but I didn't have the rest of it.
You have code ethics for you to review and sign. And then we have to vote for chair and vice chair.
Need this right now.
Yeah. Do you want that tonight?
I'd like the last page.
All right, you guys want to take a second to go ahead and review it then?
This is the same as last year's. I just want the last page.
Yeah.
You need to get the policy for your reference.
Yeah.
Important stuff.
All right, we're going to vote for a chair and vice.
I will send you the motion.
All those in favor? All right, vice chair. Who wants vice chair? If he's not at this meeting.
His term expired anyway, was it?
It said that he submitted a paper.
And he did, he did tell me the other day that he wanted to.
But doesn't matter. He had to vote now, so who's interested?
Make a motion to.
He's not, he's not on the board right now. This is.
Wes. Make a motion to. Make Wes vice chair.
Just say that. All those in favor? All right, so the first, um, ordinance that we're gonna look at, we actually already have in place is the mooring ordinance. And we have found through recent events, um, maybe some things may be updated or changed or maybe, I don't know, spelled out a little bit more. So what I've given you is our mooring ordinance. As well as, um, kind of Harrisons, the town of Sidney's, um, and Casco. This as examples, you can see ours is, theirs is very thick, you know, it's not saying that we want to overdo it. But maybe there are some things in there that we should look at. One of the things that I saw in the Harrison, um, is. I think it said no more than one mooring. Have been so many feet of shore fridges. So actually, ours did not specify how many mornings are, can be placed. Yeah, that's the short line. This actually specifies one mooring per so many feet. Like you can do, say you have 200 feet of, um, water fridge. You could specify, okay, so every hundred feet you can have, like have a mooring or every 50 feet, so you could have four moorings. So something to specify specifically. This isn't a Harrison one. So this is, I mean, this is just thoughts. Like that's something that kind of popped out at me.
Well, we have it here, 50, 50 feet or less, you have to have a harbor master determine what, where a safe mooring can be installed.
And if you don't have a harbor master, it goes to go.
Right.
Yeah.
How many lots under 50 are on Ranger Lake?
I'm not sure.
They're out there, uh, people just get a little slower on water, so, you know, and they should be able to put a mooring up there if they can't get a dock or something, you know, with the taxes on it.
Yeah.
Our. Ordinance on that.
So here at this, um, yeah, it says no more than one mooring for every.
Yeah, I'm looking at page four. Yeah.
So that would cover it if you have less than 50 pages. Uh, or three, page three, number five. The Harrison.
Comment access.
Not like this one too. The mooring should not be allowed of watercraft attached to it near field with watercraft attached to other lawful moorings in or swim area floats. Any water or something?
Why are we getting into moorings?
Last meeting, we said that these are one of the ordinances that we want to discuss. I don't think ours is specific enough.
Well, it's kind of good. It's yes, yes and no. It does have, it does have right in there that you can't moor in front of somebody's lot without that permission, which is a big one.
Yes, that is.
But other than that, so it's not like somebody can go out there and just drop their boat forever and leave it. Now we're just gonna restrict people further.
Which I believe happened.
In our, in, in our zone, right there, ours was 12.3 mooring control. Already specified that nobody can just put a mooring up on somebody else's lot.
I think this partially came up because of the neighbors of, uh, the floating camps.
Right.
Concerned that they had three 30-foot boats parked in front of their house.
Yeah.
Could be to 100 feet of, whatever it was, 130 feet of throw, I, which blocks views and.
Which is a concern. Anyway, this all, this all goes to, we don't make the decisions. This is, is our ideas good or isn't it? Yes.
Thank you. I'm just curious. I don't have a comp to that, but not being able, is there any distance restriction? Or is it, is not, not in front of somebody's land as far as the eye can see, or is it like 200 feet to 300 feet or?
200 feet.
200. It is 200 feet.
From the shoreline.
From the shoreline now.
From the shoreline.
Yeah, there it is, right there, mooring.
Remember it came up down at Lake House when they put in the Ranger Resort, uh, they had a 75-foot strip of waterfront Ranger Resort there. And then they started putting all the moorings in front of the beach for the lake house condominiums and they got into a squabble over that. And, uh, that's what I kind of recall there that, uh, they had to move them over onto their side.
Yep.
And they had to be at least 200 feet out or something like that.
Yeah, they have to be from your shoreline out to 200 feet, cause anything 201 feet further out is state.
Okay.
So.
So they have to be in that buffer.
But it doesn't talk about shoreline this way.
Right. I think you should have something that says, cause if you ha, if you don't have anything and you have a 75-foot lot or like in the Senate's case, and you have three large vessels parked out there. That's overwhelming to everybody else around. You don't have to go crazy with it, but if it's a 70, you know, 50 feet or under.
Yeah.
You should have one. And then if you have a, out, every, every 50 feet.
At every 50 feet, you can have.
A mooring.
I mean, realistically, most of these boats are 23 feet long and they swing around on these moorings. They don't always just sit in one location, so. I've been on Moose Lake before and been a witness to a mooring get dumped in right next to somebody else's property where there was an existing mooring. And you can watch the two boats as the water comes by almost kind of, you know what I mean? If the wind happens to change real quick and one boat stops going, those two definitely connect.
Now, with that with them, every 50 feet, you can have one mooring. So if you have 30 feet of water, probably you can have one mooring.
Do we have any, anything about lateral positioning? Like does it have to be within 10 feet of your property lane?
No, we don't have anything that says that.
That's not a bad idea.
But almost like following a setback for structure.
Right.
Right. That way, is that like from the swinging thing if it swings out?
Cause if.
Yeah, if you're a buffer, so if that boat swings out, it's not gonna hit your neighbor's boat.
No, you're, you're 10 feet in your neighbors. 10 feet, that gives you a 20 feet of buffer zone at least.
Right. Yeah, which keeps them off from each other.
I think I read one, I was, I was looking at online the other day, I was reading about a town where somewhere else where you had to be within 10 or 15 feet of your property. Assuming that your property was projected out into the body of water. Just to help my good neighbors.
I see. And that, listen, I find that kind of interesting, you know, if, uh, should the length, would the length of the boat control of mooring location? So that if you have a 30-foot boat and you have it on a 15-foot rope from the mooring, well, that's 40, huh?
Sure.
You know, uh, it's gonna be hard to keep that boat within, if you own a 50-foot lot, it's gonna be hard to keep that boat on your extended property.
Right.
Right. Um, you know, I don't know if that's come up to be an issue with them, but, uh, it seems like it could if someone else had a boat. That they're planning on using all the water that's inside their extended property lines with their boat to swing around on the mooring. The other person, it seems like it shouldn't be able to cross that imaginary line that goes up. There, otherwise there's gonna be conflict.
Do we have anything?
No.
Where the 20-foot boat, you know, would, you could be 10 foot closer with your mooring.
So the setback is per size of the boat? Is that what you're suggesting?
It almost seems like it, it would be the most practical way, but.
Right.
Whether that's in what some.
So we would know what size of boat was going to teach more.
Well, I think most of these actually have a permitting process. You have to go through a permit. You cannot transfer it. The homeowner cannot transfer that permit to anybody else on that. Without going, is that an annual permit? Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you don't have to charge a fee. Like it's just a, okay.
A permit.
Yeah, no. But it's a permitting process that I think one of them I saw it was December.
Annual mooring fees you pay.
See, like what, uh, Mark was saying, it's not specific, but it says line, there's a line between the mooring and the buoy shall be chained up, should be chained for the size to fit boat exposure and water depth. Anyway, that was my second.
There needs to be something that says your boat can't float over.
I think we need a harbor master.
One mooring.
Hey, I'll do that.
You wanna be a harbor master?
I agree.
Jump in the gun there.
I honestly think Ethna was considered the harbor master before she was.
No, Marshall Swann was back in the day. He used to.
Yeah.
Should look into, should look into pointing that position.
So we're looking at setbacks for mooring, um. So we're looking at setbacks for mooring, possibly size of boat.
Oh, maybe like writing up is like your boat cannot engross within 50 feet of your neighbor's property. There are some waterfront.
Oh, you know what?
There's some waterfront slots out there that like, you know, they just narrow up right to the waterfront and you get, you know, you might have two acres of land, but you only got 20 feet of waterfront.
Yeah.
You know, so yeah, something written up like your boat cannot engross within 50 feet of your property line. Yeah. Something to that matter. And then that will give, you know, if, if people are violating it, give it code of course not, so, you know.
Yes.
Step on, step on, you know.
Maybe get something about density, you know, how many.
Well, that's where you're like one mooring every 50 feet of waterfront.
For it to be 200 feet, what's to keep people stacking four moorings in a line?
Well, no, no, you know, parallel with the, with the shoreline.
Right.
I think with that, there needs to also be some type of footage of how property lines would extend into the water.
I think that's like us, we went over this with something. I think that is like, it's, it's already written up, like your property lines, they come like a basically perpendicular off the shore.
For people who are the shore.
Yes, so that's kind of like a standard already.
Should we do a permitting process? That way. Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully it's something we need to charge for.
No, not charged for, but that way we're keeping track of who has moorings. And who's.
Permitting process is a good way to, did that thing, yeah.
Right. What do we do with them? What do we do with all the moorings that are currently out there? So you must be, can't keep on that?
Well, if that's going to be an annual process, you have to start analyzing these folks.
Should it be an annual permit?
I think that's pretty simple. Maybe every three years.
Yeah, and here's one. It says all new or existing shoreline area moorings shall be registered initially accompanied by a mooring location plan. So when they bring it into you, say, you're, you know, there's their imaginary property line out in the water and they want to put a 50 foot boat. I mean, I'm just exaggerating obviously, right here, you can be out there and that's not going to work.
Right, has to be within here.
Yeah.
Oh, there's some, and then that's something that can go right in their property file. So anytime like an issue comes up with neighbors, like if they have to be moored, you can see if it's actually on.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if their lot, I mean, that, that makes sure if their lot is narrow or too, that it's actually looked at prior to the boat being thrown in the lake. Just mooring going in and something.
Sorry. I'm just curious there. I noticed this on the first time that there's a lot more moorings next to a close up arena than there ever have been. And I've just been wondering, noticed that in the last two weeks. I was wondering if those belong to the condo owners or if Larry puts a mooring and ran them out because he ran out of dock space or something like that. So in wondering, in, it doesn't matter to me at all, but like on the condos. I don't know how many condos are there. You know, there's, are there front ones and back ones or are they all in the?
I think there's six condos.
Six.
I think there's some right here and then there's some like.
But I think those moorings out there, I think Larry's docks are 200 feet long. So anything after 200 feet, we don't have control over anyways. So you can drop one out there wherever you want in the lake as long as 100 feet offshore. So that's state property at that point.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have no idea. I just, you know, you drive by and they look out at the water and it just happened to notice there's way more moorings.
But then that's a concern because the state says they do not permit any moorings out on, past the 200, our 200 feet. You can anchor, you cannot moor.
It's not that.
No, I know, just saying.
So I was just wondering, you know, if condos went in like plus the development into something and they, because they're attached, you know, and they have a bigger common area. Maybe they don't have the frontage. For all of them to have one, you know, I don't know if that's a new can of worms or not, but I just.
That was kind of addressed in this concerning like summer camp. So it won't, these others have one.
I've never ridden a mooring. I haven't ridden it. You haven't been studying it for the last two weeks. Mike gets three days. Play 14 box there, double space.
Oh, so like in, which one is this? Okay, this is Harrison's again. Says the number of moorings for existing campgrounds, summer children's camps, motels and marinas shall be one for 25 feet of shoreline frontage. Which that really puts a.
I think that would have to restrict the size of boat.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I mean, looking at the tone, assuming on the first page, they don't really restrict the size of the boat. They say traditionally it's 18 to 25 feet. In a way. You know, you could maybe. You know, you have a conditional permit for anything over certain footage. Where they're going to have their neighbors sign off on it. I don't know if the neighbor should else say it. But you know, we, we're in this situation right now, you know, obviously with the, the houseboats. Where that's the biggest issue is the length of the boats and the amount of shoreline they're taking up in view.
My opinion is the neighbors should not have an opinion on it. The townspeople, when they go to the public hearings will have a say. And we just need to make sure that the ordinance is written properly. Their, their, their voices at the public hearings and voting for it.
Right. It looks like they're, right now it's part of what it says that you do need your neighbors. So it's something that would have to be addressed. Because I know my neighbors, moorings, so nobody ever, not that I'm like, I mean, I prefer to be faced with a handshake. I'm sorry, even after address this sort of thing. The situation we're in.
What do you have written? Oh, sorry, Martin.
I just, with what Brian was saying, you know, I don't know what the area audience was adopted. But where, where it hasn't required a permit, don't really know when people put those in. And inevitably, you know, if you start a permit, people are going to be telling you they ought to be grandfathered at this event. But, and that they don't have to meet the requirements of your audience and stuff. So I think that, that's going to give whoever's enforcing that a headache. So if, if you do make changes to your ordinance, you might want to think about doing away with any grandfathering that does not meet the present.
I think with it being annual permit, that would address that.
Yeah.
Yeah, new permit.
And we could like, she said, we could do it every two years, three years.
Yeah, I don't know if I do it every annually, every three years or something.
Three years, but if the property sold, the mooring does not transfer.
The mooring does not transfer ever. If you're adding a mooring, you have to get a new permit. Anything else, Martin? We can type up or like make a list of what we discussed tonight and just kind of go over it at the next meeting. Be like, okay, yeah. Let's send this on to ordinance committee.
Yeah, make a little time to pour over this.
Yeah, absolutely. Because there are some good things, there's some things I've heard a little much in these other towns ordinances, but there are some good things that maybe we can.
Yeah, and they're a lot more popular than two.
Yeah.
Harrison County.
Anything else on the moorings? All right, so let's go to houseboats.
You want us to just highlight everything in these in terms of?
Yeah, if you want to do it early enough.
Like highlight everything and then just.
Yeah.
Flip it back.
Yes, and if you want to do it early enough, you want to email it to me. That way I can, I can take it home and put it together and. All right, um, houseboats. So I don't remember, who found a ton of vote in, somebody found a ton of vote in the houseboats ordinance? And then I looked up, who was it?
Look, I remember the. So I talked to a couple of people from Naples Marina, Jimmy Allen, Scotty Allen, Neil Naples Marina. They were obviously in that area. It's a lot of boats down there that people live on, on Sebago, along the lake and surrounding lakes. The biggest thing they have, they, which we don't have here, but it's just like when you go to a campground, you have your camper. You take your camper before you leave, you go to the dump station, you dump, you're done. The town Harrison, or not Harrison, but Naples and all these other places, and I can get information on it, have dump stations. Like professional dump stations. They don't allow people to pump their own waste. It's not permitted to pump their own waste from their vessels. They have to go to these marinas.
Yeah, there's commercial marinas that they have to.
Commercial marinas, they have to go to those places to pump the waste out of their boats. I think that's the first thing. I know all the other little problems with it, but in my mind, that's like the biggest thing that pops up is we don't have a commercial marine with a dump station, a pump station, a sanitary way to do it where it's not being done in your neighbor's yard. It's being done at a dock, at a marina where that's what they pull up for. They have a slick designated for it. And unless we had something like that or Mr. Bogard wanted to put out a pump station on the lake somewhere. No. No.
Well, yeah, and aside from the post, how many boats on the lake do you think are big enough to have a bed?
Down, down on Sebago and Long Lake, you probably have, I know of like 20 people alone that have their own boats swimming up here. Oh, I hear you guys.
It, it's coming. And actually, I don't know if somebody just calling and being a smart ass, but not long, it was a couple of days after that last meeting, somebody called and asked if they can put their houseboat out on the lake for a week for vacation.
We've never heard of that before yet, so I don't know.
So I don't know what's happening, so.
I mean, I see people with porta potties and stuff, but they're little sealed, you know, porta potties that they carry off the boat and go away with, not tanks.
Yeah.
Full of waste going by your neighbor's yard. I just think it's something to look at because all those, like I said, those larger areas, they have those designated spots and that's the only way.
Let's see. Okay, so beltman says any level board boat with overnight accommodations must be secured overnight for a commercial facility capable of dealing with waste and fuel.
Yeah.
We would have to have a commercial facility with that, move enough space for how many people to sit up there. I, I mean.
And we don't want that.
Right, so if we don't have that, then you can't add a houseboat.
That's.
I don't understand why it's necessary for them to be overnight at one of those locations. Like why can't they be anchored overnight?
I think this is if you're within the 200 shoreline, you have to be anchored to the commercial. If you're past the 200 feet on any lake, I mean, you do whatever you want to do. So, so if they're going to moor within 200 feet, it needs to be at a commercial facility.
Right. Unless it's their own property.
Unless it's their own property. And then. Imagine was.
So if someone had a houseboat. And no land adjacent to the lake. So can, can they put that in and live on it all summer? On the.
On the 600 feet now, they can anchor.
If they get out to 200, attach into the state waters.
They can anchor and they have to have a 360 degree white light as anchor.
That would make them popular. Yeah.
Yeah.
But the state doesn't restrict things there, so people can live in their boats if, once they get 200 feet offshore, all summer long as they want.
But here comes the problem where the town can come in is where are you parking your trailer? Unless they're parking it, yeah, but, but yeah, the state, the state, when I talk to.
And then they could, they could use the town dock to come to shore and stuff, tie up there and go shopping and stuff, do that, so.
We have these say so when they come within the 200 feet of town to treat the waste though.
We don't have a commercial facility for them to dump in.
No.
I imagine a week's worth of.
I think, I think they're have to also top that facility.
Which I mean, we have little marinas, but we don't have marinas.
No, we can take care of a week's worth of waste off a houseboat.
And that's something that, I mean.
I just, like I said, talking to those guys this week, that was one of my big questions because, you know, I know people stay on their boats down there all the time.
So when, so they're anchoring out in the middle of the lake and then they have to come to those specific.
A lot of folks like don't, they'll do the voting thing all day, but like Captain, when you get Captain Jackson at Naples Marina. All those big carvers and all those big boats, those people are sleeping in their boats attached to the dock. You know, you know, like Tucker's gone down there, where just before he's going to boat down there, it's tied to the dock. It has to be tied to the dock. They're not moored out sleeping on their.
They're not shipped at the dock.
Yep, absolutely. Why don't you just get rid of houseboats altogether? That's what I'm saying. They did, they did personal water, you can't really lose the personal. Correct. Why don't you just get rid of houseboats altogether until this facility is up here to deal with houseboats? Right now, there's no facilities. Septic systems on people's houses aren't designed for. Absolutely not. Nope. For a houseboat, so.
What's transporting it from?
Unless they get, you know, the way. There's too many, there's too many, way too many problems with that. There is. It just needs to be written right off and done with.
How do we do that though?
I don't know.
Can we write it off? Can we just say, no, we can't have a houseboat? But no matter what, you say that, we have to have an ordinance in place saying you can't have a houseboat.
You'd have to have an ordinance that prohibits it.
Yeah.
Correct. Just like they do with the seasons, like you were saying.
I'm sure there's towns out there that probably do prohibit it. Yeah, we don't have to be free to wield it. We can just find one.
Correct. I think it almost has to be done at state levels. Think of already like we have like three towns upon it right now, you know? Yes, the Range could say, no houseboats, but I can go for my water and.
But you can't, no houseboats to be.
They did it with personal watercraft soon.
Don't they have like the lake association formed and then they lobbied or something?
I don't, I don't know.
I think they, Moose Lake.
I do have an association.
I think they have an association. I think the association lobbied it to have personal watercraft.
Yeah.
You're talking about Moose Lake. I think the Moose Lake Improvement Association contacted the state and had the state ban personal water, you know, the jet skis and that whole thing of boats on those bodies of water.
Right, right. But we could have, or just say no houseboats are to be launched from any, any.
You could, you'd need to check the town council there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then that would be enormous people holding.
Do I, is there a launch at the state park?
There is, there is.
They could, this is on.
There's a couple of launches on the other side of the lake. There you can launch over the state park.
So maybe what we need to do is take this.
Don't, it's self-bogged, dump it all.
That's what's going on.
No, it could become a problem, right, I mean.
Maybe work with Range Lake Plantation. Maybe we need to research other towns to prohibit it, because that's a state law, the two hundred foot high water mark or whatever, so we just need to look at other towns to prohibit the houseboats and see how they handle it. But to one hundred percent, no, we have to work with Range Lake Plantation and Sandy River Plantation, I think is. Sandy River, right at the end, I agree though.
They own a little piece of, of the lake down there, like Little Shins.
Yeah.
Across from the Thomas Market and that.
But I don't think. Yeah, so let's just find other towns to prohibit that, you can take it from there and bring that to the next meeting.
Yeah. We should also probably define what's a houseboat. One, one of these coordinators mentions anything with a head and a galley. Capable of sleeping people overnight. Because. You know, people are gonna try to find loopholes and whatever gets done, and if somebody can't have a houseboat, they're gonna put it, you can put a twenty eight foot boat on a trailer and pull it with a one ton truck. It's not fun, but it can be done.
Is there anybody right now that has, so. That has, I mean, should we specify kitchen too, cause there are some smaller boats that have like just go downstairs and you have a bed in it.
Right, yeah. Yeah, you get twenty three or twenty foot cabin, you know, little caddy. They don't actually, I mean, most of those don't have functioning. System, so to say, my Donzy had a, a, a little, a little glove box thing, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We put out the beer cans and just, you know what I mean, just like I said, it never got used and like the boat never gets swept. One of those, it's not comfy, it's not ideal.
Yeah.
I guess, I don't know.
In oceans going grass, out in the ocean, you know, they, all those boats, they're just discharged into the. Ocean and. But on, on lakes, are, are there separate, a set of rules there about just. That it's illegal to discharge into, I mean, it's, it's gross, but, uh, you know, that doesn't mean some. Some people aren't easily offended by this type of thing, you know, so I didn't know if there was a specific rule that, you know, made illegal, they were illegal, such a thing as an illegal discharge of human waste or, you know.
Even gray ones.
Yeah.
You can actually discharge human waste when you're out on.
All boats do, they just pump right out to the air.
You know that?
Yeah.
Change my mind about wanting a houseboat.
Where do you think the fish go?
Yeah, and. In the saltwater there, that's the way that goes.
Unless you're, unless you have a, you're a marine.
Lakes where they're closed system, you know, an ocean, I think is considered a open equal system, you know, uh, but a lake is more of a closed system, so it. Is more problematic. And they're more heavily inhabited around the shoreline as well. I, I never looked into it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a state law. It is, person may not throw, drop, deposit, discard, dump or otherwise dispose of litter any meter amount. In freshwater lake tidal coastal water or on the ice over the water. So it is.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like something there, I just.
No, it's like these snowmobiles catch on fire, this is like the teens, everything.
Oh, everything.
Dumping of waste and regular litter here.
I think that the biggest concern with the houseboats is the definition, that it's, there's no gray area, exactly what it is.
Yeah.
Because even this winter one that says, which is primarily as living quarters, a lot of people say that they're not using it primarily as living quarters.
So a houseboat I would almost like classify like almost like a regular house, it needs sleeping, it needs bathroom, it needs a kitchen. If it's lacking one of those three, then it's not a houseboat, if it has all three, it's a houseboat, you know what I mean?
But we have to also size and future those things, what about the waste?
It says, I wouldn't, it doesn't matter, yeah, if your boat's got a kitchen on it, it's got a bathroom, it's got a.
No, I'm just saying, so. So say, okay, we say that and.
Ban houseboats on Range Lake, you classify a houseboat as. A vessel that has bathroom, bedroom and kitchen.
Okay.
It's done.
Okay, so what if you just have a bathroom and a bed? Then it's allowed, then what do you do with food?
Maybe a bathroom next to it should be any type of waste storage. As part of the definition.
We need a new pontoon boat, so. Porta potties.
They do, they have porta potties. Mine's got a sink.
And I know people who just take, yeah.
What were you doing? They're great in the water anyways. I've done the whole lot.
That, that doesn't become an issue.
Yeah, that's it. But people were conservative of this thirty years ago, but it never materialized.
Yeah, it's starting to number.
You, you do have those little cu- caddy cabin, folks that will have like some sort of porta potty. You know, but that's not helpful, that's, you know. But they don't have kitchens.
But it's a porta potty, it's not a installed. Bathroom with storage container.
And shower.
And a shower, all in one little area.
But I bet you if those caddy cabins were designed for saltwater, they have a foot pedal on the side of that flush and you stand on that foot pedal and you take it to take that.
Right, get a button and blow it up.
That just blows out the bottom of the boat.
These guys, we can get a houseboat occupancy permit as well. Just like we would if you were renting an apartment or.
Alright, so we should look at.
It's easier just to ban them.
Yeah, so let's look at other towns.
Yeah, I think once you just look at their waste disposal process too.
Yeah.
Quite impressed.
We should take a field trip on your boat. Go get the stuff with the. Two marinas and take a lap around the lake and see if there are any boats there.
Can we do that outside?
You know, Range Lake seems they, when people first see, you know, for six thousand ages, you know, really it was small compared to.
Not that big, it's all that big once you're out there.
You know. Those are the types of bodies. Yeah, and, you know, flushing ranges on a distant that pond, uh, with, or turn.
Right.
It's. That's why the town, you know, since the early ages has been pretty sensitive to shoreline development, you know, and so, and trying to control all the erosion and the. Phosphorus entering the lake so that.
How many outlets?
Didn't get nutrient rich. This. Other thing, but. If those, there were to be numerous, uh, discharges, they have to, they have to rate all of that.
That's the only outlet?
Not very effective.
We wanna be, we're constantly being reaction, reactionary, not for the next time to start dealing with it. But sometimes we just don't know that these things are an issue until it's an issue.
See, historically, many of the homes cut their water from the lake, you know, uh, and a lot of them drank it for a long time, now some, the, the ones that are left mostly just use it to. For household water, you know, and they don't consume it, but. You know, it wasn't that long ago that, you know, a lot of these cabins and they show, you know, my house owners drank, drank that water from the lake, you know, and it was perfectly safe. You know, on all the bodies of water around here, except people working on the, upon this account, so it's just, but everything, everything else, people were pretty comfortable. You know, with the quality of water.
Alright, so we'll try to look at other towns that, does anybody know of any other lake towns that do not permit houseboats at this time?
Sure, the internet's quick internet.
It is, but I don't know if anybody moved anyplace offhand or, no.
Lock door and when your shop will come into, something, something like that.
So I know you were here for the next one, but we have four minutes to the next meeting, so I think we should just table the other two.
You can do another workshop at the.
Let's do another workshop, the next meeting, yeah, cause I, everyone deserves, you know.
You don't wanna rush.
No.
When is your next meeting, it's either Tuesday or Wednesday from now.
What's that date?
Twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth.
What is that?
The twenty sixth.
Oh, oh my gosh.
Yes.
What will we do at five o'clock here?
Five o'clock work? It just, you see how much time is spent talking and discussing it, so I think, yeah, five. Um, but you guys have all this.
And is that a six o'clock or the five?
The workshop would be at five.
You're gonna, you have a workshop with every one of your meetings?
Nope.
No.
Just till we get through this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No, thank goodness. So keep your, keep your stuff and read it. So if you guys see anything or anything pops in your head, call. Any of us and we'll get it written down and put it together for the next meeting. Alright. And then take a two second break.
Are you, are you taking a break?
Like just a couple minutes. Acknowledge Terry Paul, she's sort of the lighting on there.
Oh, Terry?
I think she's gonna go down, I'm sure she's gonna be herself. She is the one who came in about the lighting.
I know, she would say.
She would need to unring herself.
Hello?
Okay, oh, hey Terry, did you hear that, that we're gonna, um. We have a couple more, um, ordinances to discuss, but we are, we ran out of time because our regular meeting starts at six.
Yes.
So on the twenty sixth of August at five, we're gonna have another workshop for ordinances.
Okay, will you be discussing the lighting, potential lighting ordinance?
Get to it, yes.
Okay.
We have, uh, as far as the schedule, we have two other ones to discuss before it, so.
Okay, and can I, could I attend in person, I see that you, looks like you might have a person.
Yep.
Alright, good to know.
Alright.
Thank you.
So Brian, you folks close down Wednesday, can I get?
We are, yeah, so that workshop will be moved to this schedule. It does now, it's, we, last summer we were open on Wednesday, so I leave work, come here.
And go back.
Go back. There's just no hope to be had, we'd be open seven days, we'd have no hope.
Wow, I'm glad it's too good. I was about to tweet. Believe myself.
I got, I applied from when I got laid off at the restaurant, you know how many calls it took for me to get all of them out there?
Oh, no, I'm.
Two, two thousand five hundred and sixty one.
Oh, yeah, no, I applied.
To apply for an employment, and I got to the, to the operator, I said, I'm not gonna get all these private calls, a hundred and fifty calls a morning for the best. Two weeks, as soon as you call, it says, please call that later, lines are busy, please call that later, this was in March.
Were we doing it at one point where they were trying to do it like alphabetical?
Well, at the end, I'm at the end of the elements.
Designer, yeah.
So, I, I was always the back of the class. I had, when I finally got ahold of the operator, she said, you know, we had a hundred and fifty thousand people apply for an employment in a seven day period, we have fifteen operators. And I was on the phone for forty five minutes, so, and they're only open from eight thirty to twelve thirty. That's it.
Wow.
So how many calls you get on a day, five, six? But it's two thousand five hundred and sixty one involved. But, but I make it to a hundred and fifty calls and I hang up for the day. Go to something else in my day.
I applied for it. On the internet, they sent this back, this is March. They sent me a letter saying that I got a phone appointment, because I don't think it's on, I think it was July twenty fourth. But I really didn't need it. You're gonna lay yourself off lesser face. Big enough stimulus program. Yeah, well, I laid myself off, but then I had to hire myself back.
Alright, so let's start the regular scheduled meeting and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the republic, for its strength, one nation, under God, universal liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so, any adjustments to the agenda for this?
No.
Alright, um, review meetings from July twenty second. Any discussion? All those in favor? So any correspondence? Okay, now we're moving into the Kate Williamson, y'all remember she was here a few meetings back about her lot division.
I don't have that set in front of me.
So it's really, MMA, MMA said, honey, where it's not issue variance, that always goes to the zoning board appeals. Rarely are they granted if you created your own hardship, which is kind of what Kate was looking into, where it's like putting that dry going through the property, so. I have her back and Kate, I don't know if she's gonna put it with the zoning board appeals or if she just abandoned it, that's what MMA people came back to me with.
And then the ordinance work is ongoing. And a new business. Anything you guys want to discuss? Alright, well, that was good. The next meeting is August twenty sixth, workshop at five and regularly scheduled meeting at six. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Six, so important.
Hold on a second.